It looks like we've got everybody in that's waiting to come in on the Zoom. So Nadine, what areas for the new people and Lisa and Andy? If you want to take the podium mic, maybe so they can hear you on this.
Right.
Yeah.
They'll say their names in their offices and they'll go from there, right?
Uh huh. Yep.
Bear with me. So then I will start and then you will say your names in your offices. So we'll start with Jeffrey. Hi Jeffrey Graylow.
Hi Jeffrey Graylow.
Having been elected to the office of the Clay County Commissioners.
Having been elected to the office of the Clay County Commissioner.
Hi Lisa Twilliger. Having been elected to the office.
Having been elected to the office of the Clay County Register.
I Andy, having been elected.
Andy, I haven't been elected to the Clay County Sheriff.
Okay. I Dave Teasy, having been elected.
I Dave Teasy, been elected to Clay County Commissioner.
Okay. So having been elected to the office within and for the county, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of this, of the said office of Clay County Sheriff, provided by the law, by County Commissioners, provided by the law, and the Clay County Registered Gates, provided by the law. Say I do.
I do.
Right. We'll have you sign. All right, Nadine. All right. Make it work very well. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, Nadine.
Congratulations to everyone.
Photo balls. We're shorting footage markers.
Yeah. Yeah, you want us to like. Want to squeeze in a little bit? Thank you. Great.
Congratulations. Yeah, welcome. Thank you.
When we're all finished today too, I need to get a picture of the five commissioners for the county directory.
Sure.
The Ice Bowl picture.
Yeah.
And the last one. Last one, we're out on the front steps.
Yeah, and we don't have to go outside. I mean, we can do it anywhere, so.
Andy, do we need jail minutes on here?
Yeah.
Because it's not.
It's not, and we should, we should talk about it.
We need to add that one to adjourn.
I think I sent something to you guys late last week too that needed to be added. I wonder if it was.
Wasn't that Bruce?
Yeah.
Or was there something else?
No.
You can add me, but I'm just here.
Okay. Yeah, that might have been it.
And that's just to add jail meal discussion, right?
Yeah.
Andrew Drew years was second. Reading or was it the other one?
Yeah.
Both of them.
Carrie, you sent out that today was supposed to be.
What's up?
You sent out how to go, right?
Yeah.
Other than just.
Right. It's in the packet.
It is. See on my PDF page too. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
We approve the agenda for today before we adjourn, or should we do that after we begin?
I think we usually do it before.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We'll start with legions.
Let's leave it to the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and it is with the key and justice for all.
Well.
Mockler. Graylow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Teasy.
Here.
And here.
Agenda with the addition of jail discussion. Drew zoning. Worked on it. It is, okay, sorry.
And the sale bonds. There's a question.
That's what it was. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
And discussion of sale of law.
I'll move approval.
Second, I have a motion to settle discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed, motion passes. Proven minutes from the December 27th meeting, move to approve.
Second.
I'm motion of a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion of a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Were adjourned, we can reorganize.
I'll call the meeting to order and open up the floor for nominations for chairman.
Like to nominate Betty Smith for chairman.
Second.
Sorry, just need to get that down in my notes there. Any other nominations? All those in favor, was there, you were just taking your glasses off? Sorry, I looked up. Okay, all those in favors, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion passed. Turn the meeting over to Smith.
All right then. I think nominations are open for the office of vice chair.
To for Travis Mockler to be vice chair. And second.
Move the Dick Hammond to be vice chair. Second.
Yes, I guess would would be proper to have a motion to have nomination seats. Is that what we should do with something like this?
Good question.
Or or this, I mean, we we could certainly discuss it. I. I mean, my my sense is it would be invaluable to have a vice chair with a lot more experience than I have. And while both of you have a lot of experience, you've been chair for quite a number of years and I think that would be really helpful.
That's my opinion also that Travis has the most tenure on the board by a shot. And but others. I would certainly welcome having you as the vice chair. I think you would be the right person for the job.
But I still don't have any. Betty's still got to go to all meetings.
Yes.
I still wonder how that's going to happen. Especially with the new jail. I mean, I know how you like to travel, so. And the vice chair does not have any power to do anything at those meetings that you're not at.
That's one of the things that I was planning on discussing is that we should have a probably have a a new appointment within the within the boards of someone that's in charge of facilities and new facilities development. And I think you'd be the right guy for the job.
The problem with that is the chairman makes decisions that have to be on the spot. You know, decision coming back to this board, chairman has the
Correct.
Has the authority. That person's not going to have that authority because I'm the chairman.
But I think the chairman does have the authority to appoint a member of the board to act in her stead. And I mean, I I think sort of since you've been on you know, the the case from the very beginning.
Well, I understand.
It would provide continuity.
You wanted to be chairman. And now you want to delegate the things that are going to take the time. I think that all comes with being chairman.
Well, I mean, I'm certainly willing to do that on the one hand, on the other hand, because you've been working with the team from the very beginning. You have a good deal of expertise in this that I don't. And I I see the job of chair as you know, facilitating the work going forward and nothing else. I mean, I I see it as, you know, making sure that we're making progress, that the best people are working on each each project. And I'm I'm not afraid of doing work. I'm not planning on traveling. You know, that that was something that, you know, that was a decision that I made. And yeah.
I still don't know how you delegate that power to somebody else that the chairman alone has.
I, well, I I think that's the power of the chair is is to delegate.
You delegate jobs, but you can't delegate your power to somebody. That's that's being chairman, chairperson, sorry.
Well, when it comes to signing documents, for example, I think the chair has to do it when it
Making decisions.
When it comes to working on a construction team, you know, most often there's a clerk of the works that's, you know, that's designated by the, you know, the body. And I I think you've, you know, I mean, if you don't want to do it, you know.
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is if there's a decision to be made, I don't have the power to make it out this board. As chairman, you do. And there's going to be a lot of decisions that are going to be made on the fly on this project. So I just just want to understand how it's going to work.
Sure. And a lot of times for Betty should also be in the room is what you're telling us.
Well, there's got to be decision.
Yeah, yeah. And if if that's the case, I'll be there. And I, you know, but I I think that there's so much value in somebody with your experience and background in a project like this, moving it forward.
But you have to be in the meeting.
I can do that.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, because you're going to have to make a decision.
Okay.
We can't, we can't, we got to get back to it.
Right.
Then that's not on the fly decision. That's a slower construction process now.
Right, right, right. Yeah, sounds good.
Now we're actually back to the.
All right. So. Let's see. Well, we could certainly just just have a vote. On the other hand, if somebody wanted to decline a nomination, they they could. All right, then let's let's take it to a vote. And so the two choice are for vice chair are Travis and Dick. So we'll go in the order in which the nominations were approved. So all those in favor of Dick Hammond as vice chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, all those Travis as vice chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And so, yes, so Travis is now is now vice vice chair. Okay, so next on the agenda is visitors to be heard. Ina, did you want to speak to that?
Your commissioners, I am writing to inform you that after much thought, I intend to retire my position as a director of escalation of Clay County on June 30th, 2023. Thank you for allowing me to have a productive and rewarding career for Clay County for the past 29 years. However, I am looking forward to retirement and starting a new chapter of my life. I have to tell all the people that I have met and worked with in this office. I will do anything I can to ensure a smooth transition for our office and the people who work there. He's letting me know if there's anything I can do to help in the exit process. Sincerely, Ina Peterson.
Thank you so much, Ina. And.
June 30th.
Your 29 years of service.
After that, but and just on a side note, I have developed another ulcer in my eye. So they don't know if I'll have to have another cornea transplant or not, so.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Good luck and thank you, Ina.
I'll be seeing you.
Okay. Um. Next on the agenda, any any other visitors to be heard? Next on the agenda are appointments. Fees, resolutions, and so forth. So we'll take them in any way that Kerry has has put together for us. And so the first appointment is the emergency manager, management director, and that would be Lane Stewart. For, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, missed one. Thank you. Okay, so we need a motion to adopt Robert's rules of order.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a motion carries. So now we're down to approve appointments. Emergency Management Director, Lane Stewart, for a term of January 1st, 20, January 3rd, 2023 through January 2nd, 2024.
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Fair Board Commissioner, Travis Mockler. I need a motion.
Want to reappoint Travis.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Executive Board of CCOG. And I'm currently on the board. We need a motion here.
Move to reappoint Betty is CCOG.
Second.
Hey, any discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board of Directors of the County Youth Trust Fund and Youth Services Council. This was Phyllis Packard, so it's a new would need to be a new appointment.
Move to appoint Jeff to that.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to appoint Jeffrey to the Youth Trust Fund and Youth Service Council. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Planning and zoning commissioner.
Move to appoint Dick Hammond.
Second. It's motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Okay, so when I'm an I, so how did you vote, Dick? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, you didn't hear me.
Okay.
I voted.
Okay, then the motion carries.
I'm sorry, who was the second for that one? I meant that.
I think Eddie was the second on that.
Public Safety Board, Bob Flur's term expired on December 31st, and he's willing to to serve and Dave Teasy has, you've you've been the at-large citizen, but now you're a commissioner. So there's a space below for the a vote on the commissioners, so we need to replace you as a citizen representative. And the sheriff and the police chief recommend Steve Waller, who has served us so ably on the Law Enforcement Center Citizens Committee. So I would, do we, do we want to take those together or separately?
I think together is okay. What's your thoughts on that, Dave? On appointing Steve to replace you?
Oh, I think that's a great option.
Okay, I think together then. I'd move to appoint both to that board.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I might want to clarify that the term Steve's coming into is a balance of the term.
Okay.
Bob has a three-year term, he's coming in balance.
Okay. Useful to know. Um, all right, next up is appointments to the Vermilion Basin Advisory Board and currently serving are Dick Hammond and Ron Polly. Do we hear a motion?
I'd move to reappoint both of them.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Southeast Regional Detention Authority Steering Committee, Dick Hammond is currently serving. Do we hear a motion?
Make a motion, reappoint it.
Sarah, second?
I'd second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Was that somebody from online making a comment? I'm sorry, who is that? I'm having trouble understanding. Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I think during discussion, should ask Andy to be comfy with me being on that board yet or?
Which board is that?
Oh, that's the.
Southeast Regional Detention Committee.
Yeah. Yes, there will be a little, there will be a little more activity in that going forward than there has been, but.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of changes.
I I'm, you know, I'll, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Okay. All right, and then so we who made the motion? Anybody make a motion? Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion case, Joint Landfill Advisory Board. So it was Phyllis Packard. And what we're looking for is a commissioner to sit on that board. You know, Phyllis was, you know, one of the founders of this organization. And so, you know, it's it's a real, a real loss for us, I think. So one of us will have to develop some expertise here. And I don't think it's an onerous.
Four times a year.
Yeah, yeah. So any any volunteers?
I'd move to appoint Dick Hammond, I think, his geology background and would be helpful in that role.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, David, I was, I was going to ask if you've had any interest in anything like that. As a new, as a new board member.
Possibly.
So I'm glad to do it, but you know, like says, it's only four meetings a year, but.
Yeah, I realize you have your plate full, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
But well, you know, I'd be glad to do it since it's only four. Yes, the plate is filling.
So, okay, so we we have a motion, somebody could make a motion to appoint Dave Teasy, or there could be a second for Dick's motion.
We have a second for Dick.
Oh, we do have a second, okay.
Damn.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, BCDC, we have an ex officio seat on that board, and it was Mike Manning. And so we we need to appoint a different commissioner to that board.
Do I hear nominations?
Is is Dave interested in that appointment? Or Jeff?
I would be, I'd be willing to serve in that role.
How about Travis?
Yeah, I'd do that one. Make a motion to nominate Travis.
If there's a motion, do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. And the Vermilion Now Advisory Council, again, it was Mike Manning, so we need a replacement. And this is that large fund that is allocated for development projects.
Yeah, we had your visit from Mr. Peterson a couple of meetings ago and
I was on that board before, so nobody wants it.
Okay, and it's good to keep that together, I think, those two appointments.
Nominate Mockler.
Second.
Any discussion? Right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of Travis as Vermilion Now Advisory Council Representative signify by saying aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Clay County Park Board. And this is a board that And this is a board that I've been active on.
Are you interested in continuing on that or?
Like, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a group that meets once a month. It's, it's pretty, pretty hands-on, I mean, I shoveled out fire pits and pick up trash and, you know, help with trails and so on. And, you know, it seems like Jeffrey's experience is probably the best match for that.
Excited to be in that role.
Okay, so.
Jeffrey then to the next board.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed. The motion, the motion carries. So the ICAP Board has been, well, it is, I guess, the chair and vice chair. So we'd like to, to keep that. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to keep that current positions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. For the chair and vice chair to serve on the ICAP Board. All those in favor signify by saying I. Motion carries. The Point of Dispensing Committee. And I've been serving on that, it's not an onerous task, it's about once a month. And it's meeting with the Point of Distribution Group. That really only is activated in an emergency that requires mass vaccine. So, you know, I'd certainly be open if anybody else would like to, would like to take, take that on. You know, I, I think mostly it's been to interact month with, you know, emergency management folks. And I, you know, it would make a lot of sense, I think, to have the person on the local emergency planning committee be the same as the person on the Point of Dispensing Committee. I think that, you know, personnel is in common and, you know, in many ways, I think the the, the jobs are complementary, right? And likely to be activated together.
I would be willing to take those on.
That's super.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Like, that's a good idea.
Okay, so should we do these?
Excuse me, can I speak on that?
Sure.
The LEPC and POT are completely different organizations. One is hazmat and the other is medical. So the point of dispensing is meets once a quarter. And LEPC meets once a quarter. So.
Currently am on the LEPC board.
You are.
And
Would that be a conflict for you then, Dave, to also be a representative from the county?
No, he's on as a citizen, he's not representing an agency or an entity.
So are you suggesting we appoint these separately then as two motions, Lane?
I don't care if it's the same person, I just need to make sure that you understand it's not they're not dealing with the same things.
Right, right. Yep, got it.
I'd move to appoint Dave to both, both positions.
I'd second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed, motion carries. Next is the appoint to the UAS, which is the is it a, is it a committee now?
Yes, it's a drone, it's the board that oversees the drone operations.
Okay.
Right.
So currently serving is Dick Hammond. Is that something you're interested in continuing?
Yes, I'd, I'd be quite willing to do that. That I think.
All right. So do we motion?
Motion to nominate Dick, second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed. Right, motion carries. And Safety Board, this was Mike Manning, and so that's an open, open position. Hearing motions.
Tell us about this.
The Safety Board is the group that handles the safety policies, manuals, trainings for county employees. Part of it is following safety benefits, rules, suggestions, all of that, which is our insurance company.
There again, I think maybe Travis or Dave would be good. Good for that, would you be interested in that?
I have no, I have no issue with that, I yeah, I'd be willing.
And want to go for it or?
Hey, somebody want to make a motion?
So move, second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I, we need to now designate official newspapers, and they've been the plain talk in the new era.
Move to designate the plain talk in the new era, our official newspapers again.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion?
This is the new era, Carrie, are they in the county?
I'm not sure if they have an office in the county. It, it does, yeah, it goes out to county residents, you know, and for what it's worth. They've done a really nice job of communicating, you know, in comparison to like, the previous paper before it was bought out, so. I have no problem with keeping them as legal. I know before there were issues, but they've, they've done a really good job lately, so.
Yes, I think we discussed it last year too, during, during this meeting and there was discussion about it then, we decided to go ahead with it. Apparently they're a better shape now than they were at that point, so.
We talked about this last year, where having just one paper for joint jurisdiction and the two papers for county jurisdiction. That screws us up with the city, they've got a different publishing timeline than we do. The new era and plain talk have different deadlines and publish on different days. When we try to get something done, we've got to take longer on the county side. So we can do that.
Sure.
The new era doesn't cover doesn't come as far so.
That makes sense.
So that would mean just scratching the new era.
No, we'll just say for joint jurisdiction.
Yeah, so we
Okay, so you're proposing to amend the motion?
No.
No.
No. So this will designate them as our official.
Designate the plain talk?
And the new era.
And the new era.
Official publishing papers, but for joint jurisdiction, just the line talk.
So maybe slight amendment to add the word, the county's official paper or something.
Well, we can amend it or we can make another line, just as a joint jurisdiction.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it, just add, add a line.
Okay.
We'll vote on this one. Vote on this motion. Countywide.
Okay.
Right.
So for countywide then, we have a motion and a second to designate plain talk and the new era as official newspapers. And so any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Have a motion to move to need the joint jurisdiction official newspaper is the plain talk.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second for designating the plain talk as the official newspaper for joint jurisdiction. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed, motion carries. For closure sale locations, front door of the courthouse and the front door of the Wakanda Post Office at the sheriff's discretion regarding location.
Second.
Andy, any?
Yeah, any discussions, that's good.
It's difficult.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying I.
Aye.
Opposed. A motion carries. And need a motion to designate the banks listed as active depositories, and that would be Core Trust, Vermillion, First Dakota National, First Bank and Trust, Wells Fargo Vermillion, Bank of the West, First Premier Bank, Wakanda, Vermillion Federal Credit Union, and SDFIT.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed. Motion carries. And now that we need a motion on county burials setting the amount as nineteen hundred dollars for burial.
So second.
Good.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed. Hey, motion carries. And next matter is adopting the State Board of Finance mileage rates. Currently, it's a max of fifty-one cents per mile. And in-state meals at six dollars, fourteen dollars, and twenty dollars for respectively breakfast, lunch, and dinner, out-of-state meals, ten dollars, eighteen dollars, and twenty-eight dollars. Breakfast, lunch, and dinner respectively.
Move to adopt the State Board of Finance rates.
Okay, and would and would you include in that motion any changes made during the year?
It would, that would include any changes during year.
Okay.
To the state rates.
Here's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is board allowance per diem, which is per meeting. And that's twenty-five dollars plus mileage. And so this, this would apply to the zoning board and also to commissioners who attend meetings of various other boards and commissions on which they officially serve.
Move to approve.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed, motion carries. Right, and now we're on to building permit fees. And the fee has been seventy-five dollars? True? Okay, okay, you're good with this.
Yeah, we moved from fifty dollars to seventy-five last year, and that's, if that covers the expenses, that's the main thing.
Andrew, he covers expenses?
Move to adopt seventy-five dollars is the fees for building permits and nine, one, nine, one, one sign fees.
That's the first one.
The first, yes.
The nine-one-one signs. You guys raised it to seventy-five, which is fine for a new sign, for a replacement sign.
I wonder what it costs us to, to, to make the signs. Okay. And Rod goes out to both, his crew goes out to both the monitor.
No.
Okay.
What if the pole's missing too? My question, I asked that because my whole pole and sign was stolen at one point.
If it needs a new pole, then it goes to the seventy-five. But it's not placed with down.
That's, that's quite an identity, that, isn't it?
I suppose we can put in there if it needs anything, but if it's just a sign they need to replace, then it's twenty-five, but if it's the pole and
Time replacement.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Amend, yeah, amend my motion to seventy-five dollars for building permit fees, nine-eleven sign fee, and twenty-five dollars for sign-only replacements.
All right. We have a motion, do we hear a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? You're good with this, Drew?
Yeah, 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 I got one more.
Okay. So hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say I.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
You first.
One more on help me along.
For my, I've got one more for appeals.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have no fee for appeals, we do for joint jurisdiction, but we don't have one for county jurisdiction, it isn't on the sheet.
And what do you recommend?
Hundred dollars.
I'm sorry?
Hundred dollars.
So this would be for zoning appeals?
I'd move to assess a fee of one hundred dollars for zoning appeals.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Right, hearing none?
Thanks, Drew.
Yeah. Hearing none, all those in for signify by saying I.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. And now we're on to sheriff, jail, and fee rates. And, I don't know, what's, what's, what's the board's pleasure? Should we deal with these all at once or one at a time? All at once, okay.
Are these all within normal, Andy?
Yeah, we didn't recommend any changes last year.
Okay.
So no changes recommended?
Move to approve the sheriff jail fee rates as listed in our agenda.
Second.
Hey, motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. Opposed, motion carries. A motion to hold commissioner meetings on first, second, and last Tuesday of the month.
So moved. Second.
Is a motion and a second, any discussion?
So I'd be interested in discussing the time, whether they all be, so it's not listed in here. Because I'm, I'm assuming that the assumption here is continuing with nine AM starts, but I did hear a lot of, a lot of constituent feedback, especially as I'm knocking on doors and things. A lot of people that said, you know, more than a dozen people telling me that it would be a lot easier for them to get to meetings if, if there were at least some of them held later in the day. So I've been trying to kind of think through it, if it made you know, I was reading minutes where this issue would come up previously, and it did make sense that having the, during the workday meetings During the workday meetings are appropriate for, are, are important for certain reasons. Um, but I thought that, you know, having at least one or two of our meetings, uh, maybe. After normal nine to five working hours of like five thirty or something like that. Um, it might be uh. Might be helpful to people, make them feel a little bit, uh, make like it's easier to come down and uh, and see your business, uh, and uh, and participate in the process here. Uh, so what are people's thoughts about that?
Right at the core. We got just as many people as we have today. I mean, they, they keep saying, but they don't show up. And. Since I've been on the board, the contentious ones have usually been in tight, like when we did the. The zoning, the livestock result or the. Whatever you want to call that part of the section. I think there was forty-four, forty-five meetings, only one of them was held in the morning, everything else was held at night. So I mean, we make those exceptions.
I think another, you know, another issue, uh. When I, when I started my campaign, uh, it was gonna be. Challenging for me to come to nine AM meetings, it was gonna require me to um, possibly even just burn. Pay time off in order to be at meetings, uh, and I know that there's a lot of uh, potential. Commissioners out there that have ninety-five jobs, teachers, you know, people like that that really wouldn't have the flexibility to be here. Um, for during the day meetings, so I thought, uh, you know, trying. Uh, maybe one, maybe just like the first meeting of the month or something like that, as a, as a five, five thirty meeting or something. Would allow us to kind of see what sort of issues we have or whether it works out, I know, uh. Uh, it might open up, open up the field of more people, uh, being able to run. Run for procedure. You know, and if it, if it. If it's just a, a bear and we realize there's a whole lot of problems with it, then you know, next year in the organizational meeting, maybe we go back to do it all. Earlier in the day, or if we realize it actually works pretty well, and we get some engagement from people, it's a feedback, you know, maybe we could do. More than one, you know, maybe next year we go to like two, we're, we're all. But maybe try and, try and like the first meeting in the month or something like that for, for a year.
I uh. Yeah, the, the part that I don't. That I, that's the, the main thing, other than what Travis pointed out is that it uh. You know, that there's low turnout for evening meetings. Uh, and I noticed in city council, there's, you know, they meet in the evening for the reasons that you're talking about. They also have a lot more diverse makeup to the council. I think in part because folks believe that they can. Um, legitimately serve without taking time off from work, so I think your point is, is uh, important there. The. One of the parts that I. Uh. Argue against e- evening meetings is that. Each of our folks in the audience here.
Yeah.
Uh, end up needing to uh, uh, come to an evening meeting, which is outside of their normal working. Working time, so it's a more of a hardship on, on say. Carrie especially, she's here for everyone, for uh, the state's attorney's office, uh. Andy, sometimes he'll often uh, zoom in and it'll probably be less of a. Uh, a problem to him, and of course Drew has uh, uh. Regular times. Once or twice a month, he ends up needing to, to uh, come to uh, testify also. So. You know, I, I, I guess I, I see advantages both ways, I'd like to see it so that uh. We aren't uh. Mainly gray hairs here. Really, it, it uh, a lot better for uh. Uh, retired people like me and Betty, that uh, can do it uh, in the evening. I don't know that it makes a lot of difference, say to, to, to a farmer like in Travis's shoe. I know, I know, yeah.
Instead of getting it over with in the morning, the employees are the other big one. Cause there's a lot of times where we. That department head might not be on the meeting agenda, but they're at least here and we can call them and get them down here. And answer that question right then. Cause if they leave, there's nobody in that office at five thirty.
Right.
So unless you're gonna require every department head to be there immediately. Cause there's quite a few times that there's not a. The questions that we have can't get answered until that person is there.
Right.
And right now they're available, they're just in their office.
If we were to do, say, a mixture, say do uh, one meeting in the evening. That would be. Where we typically have hearings that uh, Drew would be. Working with, or state's attorney would be working with uh, or. Would uh, say if we were to mix it. Would say the second meeting of the month be better, because then uh, that's a couple of weeks after. Uh, Drew's uh, planning and zoning committee uh, meetings. Uh. I don't know that it. Or Carrie, she's, she's stuck no matter what.
Well, so is state's attorney.
Sure, and I, I, I understand that.
But the second meeting would be the worst one.
Would it?
Because there's times where there's three weeks, if we can't get our question answered that day. We gotta wait three weeks to bring it up again.
So it would be better, well.
The first and the third would be the better one.
Mm-hmm.
If you're gonna do it.
We have a chat here from Sharon Gray, says perhaps those county employees could benefit from comp time. I think there would be good turnout amongst citizens if it became a regular meeting, like the first meeting of the month. And she says, good point.
Eve, any thoughts?
Well, I, I mean, total agreement was employee issue. With their, you know, out of their normal working hours, I understand, you know, we're dealing with some salaried employees. To do what they have to do. But. I'm not sure we're gonna get. A bigger crowd in the evening, and as far as. You know, attracting new commissioners and stuff, I think everybody takes that into consideration before they start their campaign. I have a job, I talked to my board before I took out a petition. And my board was in agreement that I could do this, so there's, there's options, I don't. You know, we could. I'd be in favor of wording it that we hold meetings first, second and last Tuesday of the month, or at our discretion, or, you know, or. You know, which gives us the option to change, so we're not locked into something.
Know that we'd be locked in anyway, you know, we can, during the, during the year, we can by board action change. Change it to all days if we wanted to, or all nights, or what have you, but uh. Yes, I, you know, I think you're right, I think the main, the main reason. Uh. I, I don't think we're gonna have more than the attendance we have right now, perhaps in the typical uh, evening meeting. Just like the.
And the people that are attending will be. Out of their norm.
Sure, and it.
We won't be able to contact them like Travis says.
Right, right, in evening meetings. I've noticed that, uh, you know, the city council has all evening meetings. And if I go to a city council meeting, usually I'm the only resident there, uh, so I don't see that as a. Uh, a very. Strong argument. But uh.
As far as attending meetings, we have the technology, anybody can attend from anywhere.
So, really the main, the main argument would be down, come down to expanding the pool of uh. Potential board members. And since it's an off. Year, uh, off election year. Uh. And folks' campaigns would be starting right at the end of this year. Or beginning in the, early in the next year. It could be, it could be that we could encourage maybe a broader. Suite of, of potential commissioners. Uh, by at least trying a. Uh, trying it out and, and uh. With uh, one, one night a week.
Well, the, the motion on the floor right now is to hold commissioner meetings on the first, second and last Tuesday of the month. The no time is specified, so I'd suggest that we vote on that motion. And then if somebody wants to make a motion as to time, and so for example, we could just say that. Public hearings will be in the evening. Um, you know, we could just designate all public hearings for the evening and see how that goes, um, but.
It's gonna be every meeting. If you're gonna, if you're gonna designate all public hearings, we have one today. We all zone in, even if they're just cleanup, they're public hearings.
Bunch of supplements.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, but let's, let's first vote on motion that's on the floor, um, and then we can discuss further.
Make a motion.
Well, I think we have a motion, yeah, we have a motion and a second, um, to hold commissioner meetings for second and last Tuesday of the month. Um, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, opposed? Hey, motion, motion carries, and then we can, we can discuss time. Um, now or at a, at a future, a future meeting.
So, did I understand you right, Dave, were you saying maybe leave this to a meeting by meeting basis and leave it not specified? So rather than making a motion to, to set official meeting times, which I guess, I, I don't think is actually necessarily happened at the best, but.
I'm, I'm new as you are, and as Dick says, I don't think. Is there a time set, I mean, we hold them normally at nine AM, correct, is that, you know?
I, I didn't see that in previous years, except for this discussion coming up a couple of years ago.
It was always just, it was just nine, that was just the end of that.
In the six, I think it's now six reorganization meetings that I've been involved with. At least twice, we've talked about time, time, time of meetings.
So there isn't a designated time, correct?
There isn't, because there's times we don't do it back to ten, there's times we've had to start at eight thirty, and there's times we've moved it tonight.
Yeah.
So we leave it, and those are special meetings, that when they get moved tonight, because they're not on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
And those are the, these are the official meetings, these three. And we've had plenty of other meetings that. Aren't on Tuesdays. And we've had one Tuesday, we've had one Thursday, and then turned around again and had one Monday, cause we needed to.
I think, you know, my opinion is it's fine the way it is, because we have the option to have a night meeting if we want to, if we feel the need. I mean, if there's a, you know, community outcry, you know, ten, ten percent of the time there isn't the need. Other than. If you thought somebody else. I mean, if it's important to somebody, they'll run for the job. And that's, they'll make it work.
Well, there are a lot of folks that can't make it work. You know, that are employees.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of them that have made it work.
Yeah.
But then how do we justify the people that work an evening shift?
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're excluding them at this point.
That's a lot smaller subset though.
It is, but it's still a subset.
Yeah. That maybe, you know, we, uh, folks that. Would be. Constructive commissioner, commissioners going forward. You know, we could im. Possibly increase the pool by maybe fifty percent. By going to evenings, uh, the numbers, the number that we would. Disqualified by being on uh, evening shifts. With, that's more like probably five or ten percent, wouldn't you think? Just throwing numbers out there.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, no.
Yeah.
But are you gonna expand that pool by having one meeting at a, one night meeting? Out of three? Because what are they gonna do on the other two? And so it's kind of all or none.
Yeah, well, eventually.
Because you only have to be at one meeting every four months.
Yeah.
To not be booted off.
I think, uh, you know, my, my reasoning there was to, it. If we haven't done regular evening meetings in a while, that it would be, uh, you know, we, we could see how it's working for us. And then it would also be signaling to, to people who might be considering a run, that we could do evening meetings, or that we're trying evening meetings, you know? Shows up in the paper or something like that, all they're gonna start doing, one meeting a month. To see, you know, to see how that works, or if that causes a lot of issues for, for people, so I, I don't think. I don't think that alone, one meeting in a, a month is going to make it possible for somebody, you know, a teacher say, to, to have the role. But I do think that if we try it, it'll allow us to, to see what works in one thousand, you know, we. And it doesn't have to be something I think that we necessarily decide on today, I mean, I, I guess, uh, you know, we could. We table it or, or just pick it up as. Case, case by case, but I think that to really expand the pool, it would have to be all evening meetings.
And then you, you know, as soon as those meetings happen every Tuesday night, and then kids have stuff going on. If you're thinking you're gonna get younger people on the board. You know, you get, you get Tuesday nights and they're filling. Pretty much the whole year. Yeah, I know that many activities.
You know, Alexis isn't here, but I, I recall hearing her specifically mentioning that as, as a challenge that she had, is that her kids have a lot of sports on Tuesdays.
I'd move to defer this to a later date.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve, um, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance for County's Liability and um, Workers' Compensation Insurance. Um, and these are the. Cooperative entities that provide insurance for us.
So moved.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion?
I noticed that Yankton County just opted away from this, am I correct in that, there's a.
Oh, I don't know.
I think it was this, this same type of insurance, uh. Anyone else know anything about that, it was in the newspaper within the, well, this.
I hadn't heard that, um, I think there's really just two agencies. In the state, and that's the SDPAA and then Jensen in Beersford. Um, most of the counties have SDPAA.
This liability, is that for lawsuits also?
Yes.
That's why Yankton County moved away, their, their premiums are going through the roof, because they keep getting sued.
Yeah.
And losing, if you don't mind. SDPAA provides us a ton of training. They provide us a ton of guidance on our policies. That are manuals, and they're outstanding when we have.
I would agree with that.
We've had good service from them, I agree, I just, I just wanted to bring it up because of uh. At the end of, at the end of the year last year, uh. Two weeks ago. Uh, Yankton brought it up and they, they opted out of the, out of the pool, so. I move that we accept the. South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance for County's Liability and SDML Workers' Comp Insurance as our carriers for the next year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Didn't we already have a motion in a second?
Did we?
Yeah, you made the motion.
Okay, okay, yeah, alright. I'm new here.
Wake, wake me up.
So, alright, is there any further discussion? I, I, I do think they've done a good job for us, and I've heard nothing but good things from uh. Uh, from everyone, so. Alright, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carries. Um, next item on the agenda is a motion for intent to cover election workers. And sheriff's reserve deputies and election poll workers on workers' compensation. Um, insurance, so the. The sheriff maintains a list of uh, reserve deputies, the auditor maintains a list of poll workers.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, use of Sourcewell as a potential vendor source for the county. And um. If you're. You're new, I don't, I don't care if, if you wanna talk about Sourcewell or. Want me to talk about it, they're, they're a, a really good option.
They are, um, as, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Betty, um, they go out and do the bidding, and then. Counties, um, municipalities and such are allowed to purchase off of those bids, rather than going out for bid themselves. So, um, it's just a, a good avenue for us without having to do a lot of that bidding on our own.
Yeah, and then we also know what the going rate is, even if we choose to go out and bid, we, we kind of know what, we know what the market is. So it's an invaluable resource, and it, it's often the. You know, the lowest price we can get, so.
Wouldn't be surprised if they've got the weight of a bunch of counties, potentially buy it through.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a nationwide thing too, so.
Hey, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I, so moved.
Hey, it's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, and then. There is a resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh one. And see, election precinct, it should be twenty twenty-three. See, election precinct, it should be twenty twenty-three.
Oh, did I not change that?
Yeah, well, it's not on this, but you did change it on this.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been changed here. So resolution twenty twenty-three oh one. Um, and it hasn't changed from the previous year.
Right.
Yeah, it's, um, all the polling places listed, um, and, uh. Uh, for the. For five, uh, voting districts and then resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two is precinct. Uh, election officials fees for twenty twenty-three and those are the same two. Yeah, Carrie.
Those I did bump up by twenty-five dollars. It's just.
But that's in the draft.
Sometimes to, yeah, it's in the draft.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so it's getting difficult sometimes to get poll workers, so. If it's a little bit more incentive to get them in.
Yeah, and it's, you know, the, for precinct election officials, it's two hundred dollars, election superintendent, two hundred twenty-five. Um, and then of course, uh, judges and clerks of elections, thirty dollars plus fifty-one cents a mile. And person delivering poll books and ballot boxes gets fifty-one cents a mile. Nobody's, nobody's gonna get, get rich doing.
Should these be separate?
Yeah, we can do them separately. So let's do oh one first, which is designating, um, the, um, the, the precincts. And they have not changed since twenty twenty-two. Hey, your emotion and a second. Um, any further discussion?
Who was the second on that? I'm sorry. I, I heard Dave.
Okay.
Next to me.
All right. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Roll call. Okay, thanks Travis. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
TC.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Graylove.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, so. Motion carries, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two, uh, which we've already discussed, setting fees for, uh. Elections.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hey. Hearing none, um, Harry, you wanna do a roll call?
Hammond.
Yes.
TC.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Graylove.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes.
Right, motion, motion carries. Now we are back to the regular agenda. So next item on the agenda is ditch board. Um, is there a motion to go into ditch board?
So moved.
Seconds.
Motion and a second, um, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We're in ditch board and on the agenda is an approval of an invoice.
That's where I think. That's chairman of the ditch board, I think.
Okay.
So we've got approval of invoice from three D digging for the treatment of. Whenever I get to see that.
Yeah.
And it's actually been completed.
Yes.
Okay.
We, there is enough money to pay, right?
Yep.
Then I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. Anything else for ditch board?
I don't, don't think so.
Okay.
Will you take him out of ditch board?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, we're in regular session.
All right, um, so next on the agenda is a request for variance, um, at, uh. Three thirteen sixty-four Meckling Road. Um, Drew, you wanna? Speak to this?
So early for your new member.
Moving on a lot that table before it collapses.
Oh, my gosh.
Yep, yeah.
Add it.
And then, and then turn your mic, so.
All right. This zoning, for the, the new board members, this is. Not normally how we, I like to do things for zoning. I don't have a rate up or anything because it's so complicated. Kind of stopped after about two pages because I just, it wasn't even clear to read. So we got Toby's over there. Back in, whenever they did the first round of the zoning ordinance, they zoned it ag. And then in, was it like two thousand seventeen? Uh, they rezoned a bunch of areas in different spots, but they rezoned all of. For our discussion, all Meckling Rural Residential, all of it. And they forgot about Toby's. And the owner forgot about Toby's. Everybody, you know, this has happened twice. Toby's missed it both times. So the owner, Nick Sliderman, I'm surprised he's not here, uh, just bought it and he would like to, uh, make some improvements, get a building permit. I can't give him a building permit because it's non-conforming use. Change, to get it to a conforming use means various. And in the packet I sent you all the other day, very first definition. Or the section six oh three, uh, whenever the use of apprentice got non-conforming. Uh, used through the chain, zoning ordinance or district boundaries, such use may be continued as. Uh, the use of that form version here of. I don't know if Toby's qualifies as a non-conforming use because the way it's changed two or three times. It was made not informing during the adoption of zoning ordinance and then non-conforming yet again by the county doing a map amendment. Changing all the rural residential. I don't know if this, that section six oh three applies to Toby's or not because it's so weird. Also on top of this, the boundaries around Toby's have changed. After the state came in, in the, what seventies, eighties and put fifty and that bypass in there or that little. Uh, access road to the north. It, yeah, I can't even find highway plans for it. And then on the west side, the road is kind of moved a couple of feet to the east. It's kind of slid over, over the years. It kind of moved it away from the houses, kind of slid everything over. So as much as a foot of the building, especially the eaves, might be in the right of way. Because the way that road is moved over. This is contrasted very heavily with wimps, which both the north and west side are about fifteen feet into the right of way. Then you get the, um, visibility at that intersection. The Wim's building. Very much blocks that intersection. The Toby's intersection, the Toby's building doesn't. There's plenty of sight lines. I got in the map packet, there was the Google Earth shots. I've got the, in this last pack, I put the master transportation plan. There's no accidents at that intersection, so I don't think we have a safety issue. And all the requirements here that I've sent on that pack at all. Up to all, I think those can work to clear Toby's. The requirements for the variants as well as the state law, that very last one. Were various, uh, special conditions and public interests. But I'm gonna circle back to, I don't know, and I can't spend six months trying to find an answer on this and I can't find one. Whether that first section six oh three applies for various.
Yeah, so the first question that pops in my mind is, um. Uh, why, why would we not consider just rezoning the site of Toby's as commercial?
We could just rezone it, but he still couldn't get a building permit because it's not conforming because he's into the commercial setbacks.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, all right. So, so the variance would be specifically, um, allowing, allowing some flexibility in the setback. Language. I was looking in the zoning ordinance. There isn't a whole lot in there except for permitted and conditional uses and then a few. So it would be the variance is just specifically for the setback.
Stress.
And then we would be, and then, and then we would also be rezoning to commercial. Okay, all right. And I wasn't totally clear based on the address. When I pulled the address up, it looked like it was a different property. So I was thinking. I just typed in three one three six four Meckling Road and it, uh, put a pin on, uh, a building down the road from there, not Toby's. So, so I was, I thought that was my, yeah, yes, understanding there. I was like, are these two separate things or it's the same site? Okay.
Yeah, I checked that.
So those would be the, the two issues would be to rezone essentially just the lot that Toby's is on as commercial.
Yep.
And then requesting a variance to the setback of, of how much? So it's currently fifteen feet and we're actually like negative something.
It's about one foot on the west side and nothing on the north side.
Okay.
Wimps fifteen feet on both.
All right.
At least. This has to go in the front of the board of adjustment. I forgot. This, uh, you guys have to reconvene this board of adjustment for the vote.
All right. So.
To reconvene is a board of adjustment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are reconvened as a board of adjustment. Thank you for that.
All right. So that answered your question?
I think that that does. Yep, I think that that does.
So my question is, I've read through all this and stuff. So the variance and the rezoning is gonna fix the problem?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what we need to fix this.
Yeah, and. Since it's kind of a county's error here twice, I think we need to.
Yeah.
But this section six oh three, I've stared at and I've called people. I've spent way too much time. I cannot give you guys an answer on that. I don't know if that applies or not.
What's the state's attorney say?
I don't think. No, because there's no case law for something like this. Uh, there are some cases out there and all I kept finding was, uh. Tests that the court uses for different, and I don't know which ones, and there were so many of them. I started using some of them and I just kept finding more and more and more and more and I pushed away because I don't know which applies or what doesn't.
Yep. Yeah, that, I mean, this does seem like a non-controversial decision in the sense that, I, you know, Toby's is like, uh, I don't know, it's a.
It's an institution.
It's a, it's an institution. It's a landmark. It's.
So you wanted, so they can't get a building permit without this. So in six oh five, extension or. You know, unless, unless the use is changed to a permitted use in the district. So we're just gonna change this to a permitted use.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think that.
Well, it's already conditional use. Because he's, the bar restaurants are conditional use.
Which they have, which makes them a permitted use.
Yep.
I mean, because we've given them initial use or permitted use.
They have a permit.
Yes. But by default, it is still a permitted use because of it.
Correct.
So they can. This says a non-conforming use shall not be enlarged, extended, converted, reconstructed or structurally altered unless such a change to a use permitted in the district.
But it's not in the correct district.
So we're just gonna change to commercial.
Yep.
And then they'll be fine.
They would still be non-conforming without the variance.
But they're permitted use. If we change them to commercial, they're gonna be permitted use in there, which makes them not a non-conforming.
But they're still in violation of setbacks.
Right, so they're not, not conforming with that aspect of, of the.
Yeah.
Setback.
But he, that's interesting.
Now there are two, two definitions of, of permitted that we're working with. And. I, I think using, uh, Travis's, uh, definition of permitted use. Would, uh, hold up pretty well unless we.
Well, I mean. If, if they were in violation of something, we can pull their conditional use permit. So they're not permitted anymore. So they couldn't expand if we didn't want them to.
Right.
As long as they're not doing anything in violation and they still have their conditional use permit, they are permitted use. They become a permitted use, but conditional use permit.
So is this, is this a case where we want Alexis to take a look at this?
We're gonna kind of the same answer.
Yeah.
Because it's so. With all the changes that, in the backstory to this.
Right.
So I mean, if they're, if they're from, uh, permitted use because of the conditional use permit. The only reason. They don't need a variance to build because they can't go towards the property lines to the north and west anymore. They can only build to the south and to the west or to the east, I mean. So are we giving them a variance to be able to do that right now or?
No, no, just so it was a completely conforming use.
I think they're conforming use if we change it to commercial.
I, but they, they still run afoul of the, of the setback rule unless we.
But they're there. The only. But they're gonna be a permitted use, so.
As long as they don't build in the setback.
Well, what happens if Toby's runs down?
He's gonna have to move it back.
Yeah.
Unless there's one hole left standing.
Unless there's one hole, unless. But that's kind of up to the insurance company too, because if they're gonna write it off, yeah. I, I kind of like Travis's interpretation. That saves us from using this variant and I was not. I like that a lot better. I'll take that. Yeah. That worked for me.
So what's, what's the board's pleasure?
We just want to change it to commercial use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the next item on the agenda.
Yeah. I'm good with that. Yeah, that works for me.
Works for me.
Okay.
Yeah, move on. All right.
Um, we need to, uh.
You need to vote, you vote this down. And then come out of the board of adjustment.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Um.
Yeah, and, well, we can just pull it. We can pull the motion.
Okay, let's pull them, yeah, let's pull the motion.
So I made the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, just resend my motion.
Okay.
We're good then.
And, uh. Do we still need the second reading then?
But not the board of adjustment.
Correct.
Right.
So we need to come out of board, move, move to come out of board of adjustment.
So moved.
Motion, second, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're, uh, back in regular session again. And the next, um, item on the agenda is the second reading of, um, an ordinance for requests to rezone land. At three one three six four Meckling Road from rural residential to, uh, commercial district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, just for the new people, just so you know, we did already have the first reading back in December. There was some concern, not objections, from the adjoining landowners, particularly to the south. Semis used to park in there. And just let their trucks run all night. And then also part of this rezone, he wants to put some warehouses over on.
Lot warehouses.
Uh. Storage units, yeah, thank you, uh, over on the, uh, second lot to immediately to his east. And they were worried about the light and trash. Um, I know Nick has already talked to the people parking the trucks there. They're not gonna park there anymore and he's gonna. There was concern about the parking to the west of Toby's. I don't think we ever addressed that, but it was a concern. Um, if it is, it's still a concern, I can pass that along to Nick. Part of this, put a no parking sign there, keep that traffic. Clear, so.
Because the building didn't move to the road.
No, the road. Right, yeah.
We, we moved our road. I don't see a problem with parking on the west side personally. The road widened though.
Yeah, the road had been widened and, uh, this came up when we were talking about signage to, uh, reduce the speed in, in town. We were having a devil of a time trying to figure out what, where to put the lowered speed limit sign. And, and, uh, so, yeah, the, the problems are ours and, uh, Andy, do you think it's a safety issue to allow parking? Out, uh, on Meckling Road?
Size of pickups that we have these days, if you, you look at, uh, the road there, those pickups are sticking out into the driving lane. Because they park facing in and not parallel.
Right.
But the road moved over to them. These people have been parking like that for decades. Um, at the same time, I see this, but I also see we've had no problems with it. Thirty plus years, as long as I can remember, nobody's ever struck a parked car there. But if the uh, the county highway department doesn't paint, they stop painting the line when they get to Toby's parking lot. If they extended the white line on through, people would be parking across that line. Personally, I'd like to see the park can be parallel there rather than perpendicular. But it hasn't created a problem. So I haven't really reached out to try to solve it.
You can ask Nick what he thinks.
Good. He sounded kind of open to that.
I mean, if he's agreeable to it, that's all.
Yeah.
Then we don't have to search for a solution. No problem. We don't have to.
Yeah, he could. He could end up putting a parallel parking sign there. I suppose it uh
Which would only fit one or two cars.
If he can, that's exactly right, but
The neighborhood habit, people park like some of these king cab trucks with the hitch. They're sticking out their quiet ways.
They're bigger than they were thirty years ago. Yep.
Yeah. And mine, my mine is is plenty long and it's not even a crew cap. Uh, so I know exactly what you're talking about. If we if we uh, we don't really need to make a condition that that be parallel parking there, do we? Uh.
We couldn't right now anyway.
Yeah, not on right.
That's we could if we did the variance, I suppose, but yeah.
Yeah, probably not. But we can uh as a matter of course of regulating our road, at some point we could uh um we could probably as part of our road ordinances, put no parking or parallel parking only in there, couldn't we? I don't know exactly how that's written. Do you have any idea, Andy?
You could do that uh, in so I
Yeah.
Shout me from the back. Some of you might not remember this, but we did this some years ago in in Burbank. Uh, people, and this is again a neighborhood habit, regular customers, people used to park parallel to the road on on the Burbank Road next to the building at Wimps. And then um, it was brought up that, you know, even though it's been a longstanding practice that it caused uh visibility issues and eventually the county commission said no parking and uh, they're still there. They were for years and I but there were signs literally on the building oh, saying no parking uh, on the on the north side of Wimps. So I think I think it would just be a parking ordinance. You folks have done parking ordinances before in specific areas.
Is uh, I I haven't been down to Toby's in a while. Does the lot uh, south of the building fill up regularly? I mean, is it is the only place to park in front of it or is that just people's kind of convenience?
I think it's a habit. I think some people park there because that's where they've always parked, but um, there's a lot. You know, I've seen it fall and there's usually space there.
Mm hmm. And uh, just as a point point of information to the the truck parking overnight that was a problem to the neighbors are reefer trucks. Where the engine on the refrigerated trailer fires up at will, three or four, ten times per per hour. And that that's going to go on with that reefer truck all night. And that's where the the problem was. And he is he is sure that he could take care of that problem. Uh.
He already has.
Yeah. So.
All right. Any other discussion?
I I do have one question on this. Does is there liability? Who does the liability lay lay on? If there's a pickup parked hitch sticking out and somebody comes and runs into it. Where's the liability there? Is it on Toby's? Is it on the pickup owner? Is it on the county? Where's the liability?
I think that'd be between the vehicle owners. Yeah. I mean, if somebody ran into you.
But there it's not, it's not saying no parking. There's no indication. So we need, you know, and there's no line painted because they stopped. So I'm just asking where the liability lies. I assume it would be on the owner. You know, but this guy's within his driving lane and he hits a pickup. It's all different than I parked my pickup alongside the road half in the driving. Is that my liability? I'm assuming. I don't know, because we we took part of the property with our road.
Yeah.
Didn't, you know, we just took it for whatever reason. Well, we're opening the camp worms.
This the site of the accident would be on county county uh, right away property. And I I seems to me like the the words joint and several may come come into play, which what's the opinion of our our uh, council?
Why I don't work for an insurance company? Sounds like it can't work.
What 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 is there? If they parallel park there, they drive straight in. What is there? Four maybe parking spots?
If they park east west, yeah, there's probably
Oh, you mean if they just pull down?
The way they're, yeah, the way they're parking now.
People can park there. It depends how busy they are. Because they'll, you know, if you've if you've got a vehicle parked outside of the building, facing the building, you just extended the west side because they'll park it off the road to the end of that car.
Yep.
So without the car, there's there's six or seven. I mean, if we talk to Nick and he has a problem, I think no parking signs would be as would cover. Right? Simple solution. Because he's got a big lot.
Right, yeah. And I think that's what's smart for everybody is to uh uh, pass along that we prefer that there be no parking there. And uh
Nick would be very open minded to that.
Yeah.
All right.
That sounds smart.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we had a motion and a second um on ordinance number twenty, oh, it should be twenty twenty three. Yeah.
Because it came through the planning board in twenty twenty two.
It's still twenty twenty two. Okay. All right, so ordinance twenty twenty two dash fifteen. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carried unanimously.
So he agrees to that. Do we have Rod continue that white line then? Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's the way it should work, I think.
Yep, and then I then that really clarifies anything. And then if somebody does park their pickup there and it gets hit, they got a white line, they can say, you know, buddy, you shouldn't car mark halfway in the road. Yeah, that that seems smart.
I've never felt we really had the authority to tell us something. We knew that they'd always park there. There's no line. And technically it is on Toby's property.
Well.
In the right away.
Bottom of it is.
There's more. Those those lines are beacon hearts.
Yeah, after looking at the Platts for the last couple of months, they're pretty close. They're yeah, Laura did a good job here. They're I'd say within a foot or two, no problem. So I mean like say he's, there's a bit of that building that's possibly in the right way, but then the property
When you look at those lines, when you have surveys done in other parts of Mecklen, they're like fifteen feet. I mean, somewhere somebody's I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to put, say, this is the way it is. If we can come to an agreement and just say this is forward, this would be great.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's paint the line and let's uh
And if it come, if he agrees to it. I mean, it might just be easier for us to provide those no parking signs to him.
I considered that too.
That'll be a different thing.
Good.
Okay. Any we thought? Okay, we're done. Excellent. Um, next uh, next item on the agenda is vouchers. Has everybody had a chance to review vouchers?
To approve.
The motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, court appointed attorney conflict. Um, I think uh, we probably need to go into executive session for that. Um, so I would uh
Do the jail meeting at eleven thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, oh, so we added, we added um, jail meals.
Yeah.
All right. And
Sorry, I I have to be in a meeting.
No, that's good.
It shouldn't take more than a minute or two. You recall uh, last week, we had no bids for our jail meals. I reached out to Pizza Ranch and they agreed to continue the twenty twenty two contract for one month while we figure out what we're going to do. Um, they also provided me with a with a price um in the event that we don't um, readvertise. So researched then in the in the the South Dakota bid book and under uh, SCCL five eighteen eight five section nine, if advertising forbids, no firm bids are received, the purchasing agency may negotiate a contract for the purchase of supply services or public improvement projects at the most advantageous price if the spec specifications of the original bid are met. So I have done that. And we do have a a price that I'm comfortable with based on previous year's prices. Uh, if you folks want to go into executive session, discuss that as a contract, whether or not you want to accept it, that'd be fine. Um, beyond that, I don't want to say what that price is in an open meeting in case you're going to readvertise and and then um you know, we've shown somebody's card, so. So if you're comfortable with me just working out a deal, great, I'll do that. If not, you want to go in the executive session real quick and I'll tell you what what I've worked out.
What's the pleasure of the commissioners?
I think for provides information when they're going to executive session.
Yeah. Okay.
And then I can step out from that when I'm done and you can continue on with the next matter.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anna?
Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Some motion in a second. Um uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Um, so the next item on the agenda is the um, contract for meals for the jail. Um.
Move to accept the sheriff's suggestion to award uh, jail meals from Pizza Kitchen for four dollars and fifty cents.
Pizza Ranch.
Pizza Ranch, excuse me, Pizza Ranch.
You're dating yourself.
Yes, I am. Again.
Sam, can you?
Oh, oh, gosh. Is there, is there a second?
Sorry. Oh, that's awesome.
Motion in a second. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, and then the last matter that I see on the agenda is um, the contractual matter of the court appointed attorney conflict contract. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the seven and a half percent, correct?
Mm hmm.
Except the seven and a half percent strike section ten or
Or strike uh, a section.
Amend section ten or two, and buddy, you can read what you know.
Okay.
What you want in section ten.
Yeah, so the um, essentially it would be a uh deleting the last sentence um, and then changing the second sentence to in the event that uh, attorneys or the county terminate the contract comma, or the contract expires comma. Attorneys shall continue to provide representation for all clients for whom attorneys have made an appearance and shall be compensated at the court appointed rate. And then uh, section ten would end there.
And then if this isn't accepted we're we're on the open market. Part of my motion.
Okay. Yep, okay. Make that part of the motion. Second and
Second.
By Dave, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, the motion carries. Is there any other business to come?
Something I have is what's spoken in executive session stays in executive session. We we talked about personal issues, so I don't want want to make sure that everybody, for the new people know that we can't talk about anything.
Okay. Well, if there's no
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Some motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.